To take one, please put any electric devices on a silent mode at this time would be great. Also, please note that all testimony is being recorded for the record. Members of the planning commission are appointed by the county board of commissioners, with one member from each of the five commissioner districts. Land service staff is here to assist the planning commission with its duties. The task at a planning commission is to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the county board of commissioners for approval or denial of requests of for conditional and interim use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments in accordance with state law and county ordinance. The burden of providing a request meets, the burden of proving a request meets the criteria for approval rests with the applicant. There is a protocol for how we will proceed tonight. For each request on the agenda, we will hear a staff report, hear testimony from the applicants, and then we will discuss and gather more information as needed. Next I will ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the request. I will ask each party to come to the podium over there by the doorway, state their name and address for the record, and give their testimony. And please speak into the microphone so we can keep it on the record recorded. Please be as factual and as possible and direct all statements and questions to me, the chair. After all testimony is completed, I will close the public hearing portion of the process. And then at that time, we will answer any questions that were asked. The planning commission will then review and discuss the case in terms of our finding of fact criteria as required by Minnesota statute and county ordinance. We'll have a series of votes, discuss whether conditions need to be made. Then there will be a final motion to recommend approval or denial to the county board of commissioners. After this final vote on your request, you may leave if you wish. The county board of commissioners will then consider the request and our recommendation at the next regular meeting, and will either grant or deny the request. And on the planning commission tonight, we have two agenda items. And the first one is Kimley Horn and Associates and Aston Kier. So representatives would come up to the podium for that. Application for a conditional use permit to construct and operate, this one here, sorry sir. Application for a conditional use permit to construct and operate a 255-foot self-supporting wireless communication tower and facility located in point of north half of northeast quarter, section 15 Township 39, range 28, Lincoln Township. So if you'd please state your name for the record, that'd be great.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Brian Holmes with Kimley Horn and Associates. We're at 201 North Franklin Street, Tampa, Florida, 33602.
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. So Amy, ready for the staff report at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chair. All right, again, this is an application for a conditional use permit to construct a telecommunications tower in section 15 of Lakewood Township. The ordinance references is section 604.6, that requires a conditional use permit for telecommunication, for communication towers. And then section 1222 contains the performance standards for telecommunications towers. Here's a plat map of Lakewood Township, and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here is the permit request received from the applicant. You receive the full application in your packet. I don't have all of the application materials on the PowerPoint, because you do have it in your packet. And here are some site drawings that were also provided by the applicant. Here's some aerial photographs of the parcel. This is a 56.4-acre parcel located in the southeast corner of Morrison County within Lakewood Township. The property owner lives on a parcel directly to the west of this property, and the property is productive egg land. The applicant is Brian Holmes of Kimley Horn and Associates on behalf of Vertical Bridge. And then here's an aerial photograph of the parcel, and then the one directly to the west is where Mr. Kier lives. The applicant is proposing to construct 255-foot self-supported telecommunications tower. The location of the tower is on the east side of the parcel. The tower would be off 410th Avenue, which is a township road. The leased area is a 100-by-100 rock pad over geotextile fabric. The area would be fenced with a gate on the east or roadside. The lease compound would contain the tower and four concrete pads for carrier lease equipment cabinets. Then here is another piece of the permit application indicating the location on the parcel for the tower. Installation of the driveway entrance will have some wetland impact, however, it is allowed under the Wetland Conservation Act de minimis exemption. And here's the letter from the Morrison County Soil and Water Conservation District approving that impact. The 250-foot tower is freestanding, no guy wires are needed for support. Overall height would be 265 feet, including the lightning rod. The tower would have the capacity to accommodate up to four service providers' equipment. The applicant has provided information regarding the proposal's compliance with the land use control ordinance performance standards, as well as engineered tower plans. The tower is proposed to be lighted per FAA requirements. The surrounding area consists of agricultural fields and forest with sparse development. Then here is a zoomed-out aerial photograph of the general area. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is in agriculture, goal A1 and A2, objective 1, local economic development, goal C1, objective 8, and goal C2. And then under that, goal objectives 1, 7, and 19. Twenty-six notices were sent, and no comment was received prior to the public hearing. And then here are your conditional use criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Amy. I guess at this time, would the applicant have anything else to add to that staff report?
Not at this time. Staff did an excellent job of summarizing the project, but I'm available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. So you guys got any questions for the applicant or to staff?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Brent.
My only question is, I read through this, at one point it said it wouldn't be a lighted tower, and then at another point it says it is going to be a lighted tower. Just confirmation on that?
Any FAA requirements over 190, or 200 foot above would be required to be lighted.
Okay, and is that a white light or a red light?
That'd be a multi, so during the day it would be a white light, and at nighttime it'd be a red light.
Okay.
After the sunset.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
There's a question from Amy, for Amy, in our packet, the Kimley Horn materials here, address all of the business standards, correct? Did, by looking through it, it seemed to me that every one of them were addressed and had something attached or an explanation given. I assume your office found that to be true, too? All performance standards will be met?
Yes, that is true. When I looked through the application, essentially what they had done is taken each performance standard and had addressed each one, and had a response. Or if there really wasn't anything, they acknowledged the standard or the requirement. So yes, I found it to be a complete application.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for providing that, that's very helpful. Now we don't have any questions. Oh, I do have one other question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Looking in the standards, it was hard to find what towers are permitted, what height of towers are permitted in Morrison County. I thought it came across 300 feet in there somewhere, but...
We do have height limitations when it comes to the, if you're in the shoreline zoning district, there is, we cap out the height at 190 feet. And then if you are within, then we're also paying attention to the airport limitations and height limitations around Camp Ripley's flight paths, and then also the Little Falls Airport Flight Path. And so we, that's, that's really, we cap them out at 300, but otherwise, those are the other things that we pay attention to that might drive a different height because of other restrictions that we have on airspace.
Okay, thank you. So at this location, 300 would be the limit?
Yes, that's correct.
So if they came back and wanted to add 20 feet on, would they need to readdress the CUP?
Yes. So also within the telecommunications standards, they can change out equipment, so sometimes they'll have different renters on, and we frequently get that where they may change out equipment. As long as they're not adding to the height of the tower, they don't need to come back in for a conditional use permit. But if they're changing the height of the tower, then they're coming back in for the CUP, because it's an intensification of the use.
And then another public posting, another public hearing, another, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Mr. Chair, what's the typical length of construction for a tower like this, and then what's the maintenance schedule?
Typical time of construction, once we get it completely designed, we still have some design and some due diligence to complete before we get into construction. A typical structure, between three and six months.
And then the maintenance schedule?
With one carrier on there, which was proposed, begin with, more may add or come on in the future, once a quarter typically for regular maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, just another comment to the applicant. Now, in the certificate of liability insurance, which you had to provide, and you did, there's a couple pages of, yeah, of different towers, I assume?
Those are entities of Vertical Bridge, so...
Okay, that's what I was assuming. So each one represents a tower, or several towers?
A cluster of towers, just different entities underneath their parent company.
Okay, and all are covered by this policy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you get around every one of them, or?
I like to travel, but no, unfortunately not.
Impressive list. You must be, you've done this before.
Yes, sir.
Marvin, need you to have something?
Yes, I have a question, and I don't know if you can answer it, or Amy. There was some comment about installation of driveway entrance having some wetland impact. What was, what is being done to mitigate that, and to the wetlands to, obviously it's approved, but what is being done so it's not a, being an issue that soil and water is concerned about?
Do you want to take that, or would you like me to?
I'm happy to. So I believe the impact was 25-foot by 20-foot, is the swale or the ditch that runs along the 410th Avenue. So we'll have a culvert in there to assist in the flow of water to not impede anything, but other than that, typical ditch and culvert.
So just approach area with the culvert, that's the only issue?
That was the only impact, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
I just have it dialed in on the de minimis letter from Soil and Water under the conclusions. It, what the conclusion was, is the activity does qualify for the de minimis exemption. So essentially, with this type of wetland, you have a maximum amount you can impact without really needing to do anything with it, and this fits within that exemption. So that's what they had concluded.
Thank you for putting it layman's terms, because I read that as what?
And then just to piggyback what you were talking about, Dave, if he'd have to come back for another, if he built a bigger tower in the future, it would have to be a whole new tower. You can't just add on to these, I wouldn't think. It's all got to be structured and engineered with the...
Yeah, the footings and everything are engineered to certain, but I'm sure there's some room in there. I'm not an engineer, so I couldn't speak to it, but, yes, sir.
I don't have any questions. I've read through. Thank you very much for a well-done application. Like Amy said, you went through, and every one of the performance standards, went through each one of them, and kind of made it so we can understand that. We should almost frame this one and say this is like how an application should be. But reading through it, it took some time, but very well put together, makes us understand what's going on here, so thank you for that. At this time, unless you guys have anything else, we'll move on to public comment. Okay, we'll move on to a public comment. If anybody in the audience would have something to say about this application, please go to the podium, state your name for the record, and say what you'd like. It looks like there's going to be any, but I have to ask three times, so is there any public comment on this application? Any public comment? If hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public comment. Okay, if the board don't have any other questions, we can move on to our questions, I guess, if you guys are ready for that. Okay, we'll start out with Marvin on this one. Number one, the use will not put an excessive burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools.
I don't believe it will, and the reason why, I'll state that it's in a remote area, it's an egg area. There is no parks near it, there's no utilities near it. And also, here, they're going to, once this structure is built, there's only going to be made a few trips a year to inspect it. And a new approach, which was approved by Soil and Water, is going to be built there, but otherwise, it will have no effect on any utilities, public facilities, and parks and schools around the area.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything to add to question one?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
I'd just like to point out that the applicant also did a very good job of answering all the criteria questions, and I found that, you know, all of those answers could be a good answer. Nice if we can add something to that also, but he adequately addressed question number one, for sure.
Okay, so then we'll move on to question two. The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property and immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. John?
As Marvin referenced, we, this is in a remote area here. We sent out letters ahead of time and received no feedback, and then no public comment tonight, so again, in a remote area like this, you're, you're not going to have that big of an impact, and you're not going to be impeding anybody's happiness around the, in the vicinity.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add to question two?
Clint, I'd just like to add, with John's...
Yep, go ahead.
Twenty-six notices were sent, there was a public notice in the, in the record, public hearing tonight, people were welcomed and informed, and it's a good process, these public hearings and the CUP process. So if there's, there's opportunities for people to weigh in specifically on this question, how it would affect them, and they have not.
Yep, good point. Anybody else have anything for question two? If not, we'll move on to question three. The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. I'll take this one, and I'll kind of go, I agree with what they put in their application. The wireless communication facility is proposed, is on a property with an egg zoning classification and is not within a residential subdivision, property zone residential, or within the area designated for future residential development in the county land use plan. The proposed facility does not generate anything that would adversely affect groundwater, surface water, or air quality, impact air quality. So I agree with their, their application statement 100%. And then I'd maybe add that, along with what we talked about with putting in the drive and how they're going to do that, the 25-by-25, but then also when you look at, there's a 100-by-100-foot area that this tower is going to be in, and that is a rock pad that's over geotextile fabric. So that'll allow all the water to go through, but also protect runoff from that big area for water, because the water, the rocks will kind of hold it and let the water go down. Other than that, there isn't anything on this tower, or even during the, when they're putting the tower up, that would adversely affect the groundwater, the surface water, or their quality. So that'd be my question, my answer to question number three. Anybody have anything to add to that?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Brent.
The only thing I would add in furtherance of that is, this didn't have any planned sewer or water hookups associated with it, so it's not going to affect the groundwater in any way.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to question four. The use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. We'll go to Brent for this one.
Again, I'll just point out that the applicant answered this question, and I'll reiterate a couple things that stand out there. It's limited on impact on the land, it's egg land, rural, there's no developments out here in Lakewood Township in that area, nor planned, that I'm aware of, or existing, or to be planned, so I think that's important to note there. So, yeah, then I would just refer everybody to the criteria questions that were filled out by the applicant without restating them.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything else to answer, or add to question four? If not, we'll move to question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. We'll go to Dave for this one.
Yeah, you know, something we failed to ask the applicant earlier is, why is the cell tower needed? And will it, what will it do for Morrison County and the surrounding area?
I think the day and age now where just about everyone has a cellphone, and the areas of, you know, limited cellphone reception is far and few between, so I think that's what the carrier is trying to accomplish here, is trying to densify the, and reduce the number of people that drop cellphone calls or have data available.
So better cell coverage, better data feed for being online, things like that?
Most certainly.
Okay. Just wanted to ask that. In the, in the staff report, there are several goals and objectives listed. When it comes to egg, there's no conflict here, it's located in the corner of productive egg land, there's no pesty guy wires to get tangled up in with farm equipment. One of the guidelines is an appropriate balance between commercial and residential, or egg and residential, and gone through that process. Economic development is the next set of goals, and this certainly is good for anybody who gets improved connections, whether through cellphone or online, because of this. So I think it meets all of the standards, and it meets all of the business standards, as we said earlier. So it's done a very good job of not, there is no conflict with the comprehensive plan. In fact, it's, fits right in with all the plans, designs.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have anything to add to question five?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
I'd also like to point out the new generation egg, with the technology they have, and the mapping and all, this is a perk for the agriculture community that is around there with the new technology. It's amazing what you can do with this technology, and the younger generation is grasping it.
Okay, thank you. You guys ready to vote? Anybody have any conditions or anything? I don't think so. Okay, we'll get ready to vote then. Okay, question one, the use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property and immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question three, the use in the opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marv?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Question four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Okay, looks like all of our questions were answered in affirmative, so I guess we'd take a motion to recommend approval.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that the county commissioners approve this CUP request.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay, so there's a motion, maintenance seconded, to recommend approval to the county board of commissioners. So we'll go down the line, so Dave?
Oh, I'm the first one?
Yep.
Yes.
Marv?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Okay, passes, five to zero. Okay, so we'll recommend approval to the county commissioners, and that they'll look at that at their July 11th board meeting. If you have any questions in between then, please feel free to contact Land Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, commission and staff.
Okay, one second to switch gears here. Okay, next up, next item on agenda is Summer Hill Properties LLC, Travis Mills, application for a plat to allow Outlot A to become a buildable lot in Valhalla Villas, first edition, located in Outlot A of Valhalla Villas, section 21, Township 132, range 31, Scanday Valley Township. Located in outlot A of Valhalla Villas, section twenty-one, township one thirty-two, range thirty-one, Scandia Valley Township. If you applicants, please come forward. Then if you'd state your name for the record, it'd be great.
Tyler Pagriba from Woodseth, the land surveyor.
Okay. Um Amy, you ready for the staff report?
I am Mister Chair. Um one of the things that I just want to cover before this is uh we don't do very many plats. This is your voting sheet. There are not criteria questions. This is a yes or no vote, but you do have the ability to put conditions on on this. So I just wanted to have you know that and keep that in mind as we go through this. Okay, so again, this is an application for the replat of an existing outlot located in section twenty-one of Scandia Valley Township. Section fifteen hundred pertains to the plating of the land in Morrison County. And here's a plat map of Scandia Valley Township and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And here's the application received from the applicant and also a survey provided by the applicant. And here's an aerial photograph of the subdivision with the particular lot we're talking about today outlined in blue. And then here is some aerial imagery of that lot. This two-point acre parcel is within the twenty lot Valhalla Villas subdivision and that was created in two thousand and two. It was designated as an outlot within the original plat for the recreational use of the owners within the plat. And so again, here is the whole plat and um the designation of that as an outlot. The developer at that time was BM and M Equities LLC. Covenants presented at the hearing for the plat ensured the outlot was not developed and treated as common space. Although the plat was recorded in two thousand and two, the covenants were not recorded until May seventh, two thousand and seven. On May fifteenth, two thousand and seven, BM and M Equities LLC recorded an amendment to the covenants, removing all reference to common areas. Summer Hill Properties purchased fourteen of those lots within the subdivision in two thousand and eleven. This made them the majority owner within the subdivision. On May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Summer Hill Properties recorded a third amendment to the declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions. Which effectively terminated all covenants, conditions, and restrictions within the subdivision. Land Services was not aware of the changes to the covenants. The applicant has a buyer for outlot A and the buyer wishes to develop the site. Since this lot is not recognized within the plat and by the county as a lot meant for development, the lot must be replatted for development purposes. A septic soil evaluation has been completed, evidencing adequate soils for a type one septic system. And the applicant attended a development review team meeting. Scandia Valley Township was provided a copy of the plat. Uh no development agreement is needed as no construction of public or private roads is proposed. The lot has existing road access. Since this is a replat, Land Services has made the determination that the preliminary and final plat can be heard together. So this is not gonna come again um to you. This will be your one consideration of this. The landage control ordinance allows for the county to require the set aside of a portion of subdivided land for use as open space, park, recreational, or common areas. Or a contribution to the county park fund in lieu of land designated within the subdivision. Since this proposal removes the set aside open space within the plat, the Scandia Valley Township Board indicated they would like a payment to their park fund. This has been discussed with the Morrison County Public Works Director and he has no issue with payment going to the township. Uh just as a side, I did not receive any other correspondence from Scandia Valley Township as far as what sort of payment they'd like. I'm not sure if anyone from the township is here to speak to that, um but I just wanted to let you know. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is residential, goal B one, objectives two, three, and then A through D. Goal B two, objectives one and two. And the applicable Morrison County Comprehensive Water Plan goals and objectives is the surface water goal, objectives B and C. Land use and development goal, objective B and D. One hundred twelve notices were sent, uh no comment was received prior to the public hearing. And that concludes your staff report Mister Chair.
Thank you Amy. Would applicant have anything else to add at this time?
No, I think she summarized it nice.
Okay, so I guess we'll turn it over to the planning commission if you guys have any questions. Now would be the time. John?
Mister Chair, so that, that's the biggest lot in the subdivision?
It, it appears so, yes.
And it was set aside for recreational purposes and now somebody wants to buy it probably because it's the biggest lot in the subdivision. Which would no longer make it except, what, was there a reason that nothing was ever developed from a common area perspective? Or do you need a certain number of homes in order to create a common area or what? How does that work?
Well, I believe when they, when they first platted it, it was just they decided that they wanted to have a common area is probably a perk to. To uh owners that purchased lots at that time. And then in two thousand and seven, that covenant was amended. And then Summer Hill Properties bought up the rest of the properties that weren't developed and then, yeah, then like you said, now someone wants to build on that lot. I assume, cause it's, you know, a big wooded lot in that area. Um and yeah, so there wouldn't be any more common space. Or there, there already isn't. Summer Hill Properties owns it, you just can't build on it right now.
Have you talked about substituting another lot for a common space?
Uh no, I guess I never talked to him about it. Uh although, all the other lots are already lots, just regular lots and lots within a block, so. I don't know how you would do that. I guess you could amend or write some covenants for that, like maybe it's possible, I guess I'm not sure. I'd maybe talk to Land Services about that, I guess, on that particular question.
Amy, would you want to allude to that?
Yep Mister Chair. When this was first platted, in planned unit developments were a little bit different than this. There was an open space requirement. Uh now, within plats, we do have an open space requirement. In lieu of really, so that, so that's when kind of some of this was really starting to be born uh when this went in. I think um because there was a covenant that there was going to be an outlot to have this open space. There was not a condition then put on the plat because there was reliance that this covenant was going to serve. To keep this as an outlot for the recreational uh needs. Uh very good lesson learned that we can't rely on covenants uh to last in perpetuity. And so if that is something that uh needs to be really locked in. Or if the whole purpose of approving a plat is because there is a set aside, then that needs to be a condition because we found that out this, this way that that doesn't work. However, we do have another option uh within our ordinance. They can either set aside or they can pay uh into our park fund. Because then our, then our, the existing public parks then support the recreational um and leisure activities for the um residents. This is in, right next door to the Scandia Valley Town Hall. And so they do have a park that they do see a lot of people at. And so that was their request that if the planning commission and or the county board directs payment to a park fund. Then that would go to Scandia Valley Township rather than the county. Because it's a township park that directly would serve the people in that neighborhood.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So twenty lots and a total of five houses, so one house every four years ish, right? Um this is a, an up to date photo, correct?
This is twenty twenty imagery.
Is there any other houses on it then?
Um I can look, I think there's been a couple of permits pulled actually just within the last couple of days. So uh I think there are more coming in and I believe there's more that have been built since then. But I can try to pull up, I might have twenty twenty-three imagery.
What's the total number of houses, homes?
I can't say for certain, uh I don't, I don't know.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead. Go ahead Amy.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You are the surveyor for the client. Are you, have you been empowered to make an agreement as far as payment to a park fund or what they're willing to do for open space?
I would have to ask Travis, he didn't, we, we didn't have any conversation prior to this about uh me giving approval about that, I guess.
Okay.
Uh yeah.
Dave?
Forgot my question. That was part of my quest, our concern was that we really don't have a representative for the uh for the landlord, we just have.
Land surveyor.
Land surveyor, just. Sorry for that phrase, that phrase, but uh um and if you look at the uh, if you click on each of the properties, you can see that Summer Hill still owns, I think. Six or seven of them. Um I assume that somebody like this corner one so wants to buy it. But there are other properties that are available through Summer Hill. If this is beacon is current and up to date, I would say um also that what was good in two thousand and two is good today. I mean, this there probably possibly wasn't a condition put on, but why was there a need for a condition? If it was plotted with the, with the agreement that one of the uh par- parcels remained an open um. You know, open, un, you know, unsettled, un-improved uh property that is good for everybody around it. Um open spaces and especially in this area. Uh question on zoning, Amy, you've got here uh in your staff report that it's residential. I assume it's shoreline also, um or what?
No, I, I'll pull up a map. It's far enough from the lake that it doesn't have a resid, uh that it doesn't have a shoreline. I think the, the, the small little corner of the southeast lot, I think has a sliver of shoreline zoning. But the rest of it is at least a thousand feet from the lake and so it has a residential zoning district.
Okay, and as a residential zoning district, are lot sizes thirty thousand square feet, the minimum lot size?
Yes, uh residential lot sizes and so residential lot sizes are thirty thousand square feet, a hundred twenty feet wide. Non-reparian shoreline need to be forty thousand square feet and a hundred fifty wide.
All right, thanks for clarifying that. Um yeah, that's the only question I have for now.
Mister Chair?
One second Marvin, I'll get to you. Is there a representative from the Scandia Valley Town Board here? Okay.
Somebody okay out there?
Go ahead Marv.
Okay.
Check.
So this is the third amendment to this property. I'm gonna make a comment, if I were the earlier purchaser of some of these lots, I'd be extremely upset, extremely upset. And I'm surprised there aren't more letters. I'm assuming there might be some of the representatives there because how it uh it just twists things. In uh, in, in uh the, this piece of property now devaluates the other properties what they expected. And uh I would be extremely upset, I'm just making that comment. And I, and you're just the surveyor, I shouldn't say just, but the representative here. And uh I'm hoping there's gonna be some comments regarding this.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mister Chair, I'm.
Go ahead Amy.
I'm just going to, I'm, I have the map.
Still looking for the map, okay.
Well, I have the map up, I'm just gonna slide it over here and I'll, I'll show you the zoning um. So just a portion, so here is the development right here. Uh and just a portion of it has a shoreline. This is Scandia Valley uh Town Hall right here and then their, their park area back here.
Does that clarify for you Dave?
Could you go back to that slide? I, I didn't quite understand where the, what the color coding meant.
The green is shoreline.
Okay.
The blue is residential.
Okay, so just that little bit of area is residential, okay, thank you.
No, just that little bit is shoreline.
The green is shoreline.
If I zoom out, you look how the distance from the lake.
Right, but just the purple is residential, there's no other residential in that area?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Kind of a.
Because the rest of it is close enough to the lake where it's got a shoreline designation.
Right, thank you.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead Brent.
Maybe a question for Amy. Um I know there's some reference in here about making a, a payment in lieu.
Yes.
In lieu to the township, however, we don't really have any confirmation of this. It's almost like putting the cart before the horse, I think.
Yes, it's unfortunate the township is not here. They had indicated that they wanted that and had indicated that they would be here to, to speak to this. Uh so I don't have anything else to go on as far as.
Yeah, it's diff- difficult, I guess, for me at this point without, without having that and or having the actual applicant here in lieu of. Uh to answer that, I don't know how we get to that.
Do you have something to add?
I had sent this plat or the preliminary plat, both of them actually to Kathy. I believe she's the clerk for Scandia Valley Township, probably close to two months ago and, and she, they were gonna have a meeting on it and, and it was brought up. And I guess through email, she had stated that if she had any questions or concerns, she would reach out to me and, and I never heard back from her.
Okay.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead Amy.
I did not receive any comment from the township that they had considered it, it at a meeting, so I can't speak to what the discussion was at their meeting.
Okay, I got one. Um in our staff report, we talked about changing them covenants and stuff, um Amy. Um how important is that for the county to need to know that? You said the county didn't, you know, Land Services didn't know about that. Um can you kind of add to that a little bit?
Well. So when, when a plat is considered and um the proposer comes in with a set of covenants and restrictions and rules and, and all of this. It really defines what the, what the development will be and what it will not be. Uh and that is certainly heavily considered and weighed by the planning commission and the county board. And, and it does enter into the vote. And so the spirit in which this was considered was with those covenants and restrictions. Um and so. I guess the, the teachable moment in that was someone can record something without, which has happened. Um can record something without Land Services' knowledge and, and then it's just done. So what that means is we need to be taking a belt and suspenders approach to this. Where um it's unfortunate that um covenants aren't relied, cannot be relied upon to, to exist in perpetuity. Um and so the planning commission and the county board will now need to look at taking an extra step. So if you are considering a, a subdivision and some element of those covenants or restrictions. Are maybe making you vote to support this, then we ought to be following that up with a condition. Because then that, then we have a little bit of recourse.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead Marv.
We have a lot of unanswered questions here. I don't know how we could proceed to vote even if we have this many unanswered questions, not having uh the representative from the organization. Not having the township here to answer. I, 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 I don't think we have enough to even vote on anything. That's my opinion.
Mister Chair, with Marv on this, we don't have an updated shot of this with the actual.
Mr. Chair, I'm with Marvin on this. We don't have an updated shot of this with the actual number of homes and, and where they're all located if this was a twenty twenty and that's on, I know that, that falls on both ends, but I'm, I'm with Marvin on this one.
And Mr. Chair, I can pull up, let's see. Yeah, let me, um, since they're here, they certainly can.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, I think we need to hear from the public. I, I feel that we've got plenty of information here that um, to make a decision. And um, if they don't have a complete application and don't have a complete approach to this, uh, so be it. And that's in the applicant's court.
Mr. Chair, I am.
What, Amy?
Just pulling up the twenty twenty-three imagery. Uh, and so we can look at the development. I'm gonna just zoom out just a little bit if I can. So you can see the development level at this point. Um, I believe I did just approve two more permits. So there will be two that are being developed. But at least this, this was done, this is, oh, I'm sorry, give me just a second. I don't have a great image. Let me turn it. Our uh, twenty twenty-three imagery is just getting uploaded, so it's not complete yet. So this is April of twenty twenty-three and here is, it's a, here is the lot that we're looking at right here, but this um.
Can you get the owner's name to show up on there?
Not on this layer. I, we don't have the twenty twenty-three imagery on Beacon yet. This is just very preliminary.
Yeah, but you can, can get the owner's name back on maps and you'd see that Summerhill owns of
Yep.
Number of these properties yet.
I can, oops, I can do that. Um. I need to zoom in in order for that to show up. So, the KN builders, um, we've just permitted these two. Um, I have to be at a certain zoom level in order for you to see it, so I'm sorry that you can't see all of it all at once. But they do own fourteen lots, I believe.
It does look like they sold a.
Yeah, so it looks like right now they own one, two, three, four. Four? Yep.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
Could I add just a, a couple things?
Yes, go ahead.
So you guys did say that this, there was a notice mailed out to a hundred and twenty-six uh, people nearby. Is that correct?
Hundred and tw- hundred and twelve, hundred and twelve.
And, and no one responded?
I believe there's people here, though.
Oh, there are, okay. And, and then I just, I did have one more thing. So.
Go ahead.
Basically, those covenants were amended and that's already done. Um, so if this did get denied, the lot won't be buildable and it's not common space anymore. It becomes basically worthless. Is that correct, kind of?
It's not recognized by the county for development, so Summerhill Properties would still own it. There are no covenants for it to be open space. So Summerhill Properties would own a piece of property that would not have development rights.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, guys ready for a public comment? And I think we'll hear from them and, and then we'll uh, keep moving on after that. Okay, so at this time we'll open to a public comment. So if you'd please go up to the podium, try and speak yestah. Uh, speak close to the microphone so we can hear it and uh, keep it for the record. So please state your name and then your uh, what your thoughts are.
My name is Melissa Birga. Um, I am in this subdivision. I own two lots, one um, with the house on it and the other one without. Sorry, I wasn't in the microphone. So when I bought this property, my home, I bought it right into a residential neighborhood. Twenty lots plus an outlot. We had covenants. I understand that the outlot, that was amended, that was pretty much removed. So, as residents, we didn't have access to actually use the outlot, but it was there as a green space for us. Fast forward, the lots started selling. Some of the lots were put on the market, but they weren't selling. So they got a variance. So, pretty soon, storage buildings, pole sheds start showing up. Four. There's four of them on four lots. One was turned into a home. So now I'm living in a residential neighborhood with great big pole sheds, no homes. So people are using it for storage and they keep up the lots. I'm not complaining about that, but you can see where this is headed. And it's frustrating for us in this room right now. Between us, we own thirty percent of that subdivision, just in this room right now. And we're all in the subdivision. Like, we bought into a residential neighborhood. Um, I know that this doesn't have anything to do with you, but as far as the covenants go, none of us were ever notified that they were dissolved. We only knew it because rumors were going around that they had been dissolved so that the lots could sell and that the pole sheds could be built on the lots. So I'm asking you, please don't take away the last green space that we have in there. I understand that the developer wants us to be able to sell it to build. We would really like to keep some green space in this subdivision. And keep it residential because that's what we bought into. We have maintained it all these years as being such, and we would really appreciate some backup on that.
Melissa, just one second, please. I got one question for you. The pole sheds, are they personal storage or are they, okay?
They are, yeah. But who's to say what they're gonna do with that outlot?
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair Ben, honorable commissioners, overworked staff, my name is Andy Stone. And I'm speaking for myself and my spouse. Um, we live at thirty-four twenty-nine Terminal Drive. And about six years ago, we bought into a residential neighborhood with covenants. Okay, what I don't understand is in two thousand and two, when the board approved the development, why covenants can be changed without board approval? This is a businessman going around the county doing what they want. And I'm one of those that's pissed because things aren't the same. You know, my taxes keep going up. I keep paying them, but you guys need to stand behind us and say, this is how it is. Don't make changes unless you get some board approval. Does that make sense? I'm sorry if I'm emotional, but this is really frustrating. I mean, not only did I lose potential neighbors, now we have pole buildings. We still have an outlot, but who knows what they're gonna put in there? You know, again, you want my property tax? I can pretty much assure you that the next time you do an assessment, you're gonna get less money from me because the pole buildings are gonna bring down my house value. More importantly, I'm retired, you know. I, if I wanna sell my home in the future, it's not gonna appraise with, with who knows what in my neighborhood. So, thank you for listening. I am opposed to this and I would encourage you, especially when it says a representative will be here and they send a surveyor. I'm sorry, but you shouldn't even be discussing this. And if you table it, we'll get all of our neighbors in here. And the Scandia Valley Township, because this is a bunch of BS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan White. Ryan White. We live in uh, three, three, three zero Tellmark Trail. It's the uh, well, second from the end on the top there. Uh, that picture does not show, of course, the other properties they've come out that are built on. Um, yes, there is four properties that they still own or about to not own. They sell them, which is fine. If they're selling for residential or if they're using it for what we thought. My family, my family's had this property in there since twenty twenty-two, or since two thousand and two, when it first started. Um, and I purchased this from my parents uh, after I did my time in the service. After twenty years, I came back here and I'm now doing things for my community and it's frustrating to me to see that the one green space we have left, that we were led to believe would be the green space for us. You talk about the fact that there's a park right there. Uh, I, I struggle with uh, loud noises uh, being twenty years in the military. And that green space actually absorbs quite a bit of sound that comes from Awesome Park. But absorbs quite a bit. That's our last buffer that we have to deal with the sounds when people are having exuberant, which is awesome, parties and such, but we like to have quiet when it's quiet. And of course, when they're doing stuff at night, it's not quiet during the summer. My issue I have is the fact that if you see the timetable, when they change things, when they tweak things, and then when they did away with things, it was so they could control the narrative of who they could sell to. And the fact that there isn't a representative or an applicant from this organization that's doing this is very frustrating and it's shady if you think about it. I appreciate your time. I apologize. My neighbors are very passionate. I am too. But uh, it's, it's very frustrating as a, as a landowner to want to have your privacy, your quietness. And then you have someone that just says, well, you know what? I can just work this out this way. And if you look at the timetable, it makes sense. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm a little shorter. Um, so my name is Buddy Robinson and uh, we just purchased fourteen and fifteen right next to the outlot. House is gonna start in July. It's a significant home and I'm pretty proud to be in this neighborhood, but we were under the understanding that that was a green space. And now I'm hearing I could have a pole barn or I could have a storage facility or whatever coming in there next to us. So, what, what they've said already, I would just really appreciate if you guys would oppose this whole thing because there's, I mean, I've got a significant amount of money going into this land and don't need to go and diminish my equity. So I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? Any more public comment? I'll ask one more time. Any more public comment?
Can I speak twice?
Go up there.
Thank you, Andy Stone, again. I've settled down. Gentlemen, I, we, all of us, we elect commissioners into office to contr- try to control what happens in the county, you know? What's really, what's most frustrating to me here is, like Ryan said, they control the narrative. Well, I'm sorry, but the board should control the narrative. And whatever dealings and changes and amendments, and I don't know how they can get this stuff through. I mean, perhaps it's all legal, but I ask you, is it right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So ask one last time. Any other public comment or we're gonna close this portion to the public? Okay, we'll close this portion of meeting to the public for. So, I don't know, did we generate any questions that need to be answered, Amy, out of that? Um, I think the only thing I had maybe was, um, Andy said when he was up first, you know, why has covenants changed without land services? I think you kinda answered that before, but can you reiterate that a little bit?
We don't, so if someone comes in for an application, covenants are really the declaration of these are the laws that this, this neighborhood is going to abide by and are, and those are generally enforced by homeowners association. And then if there's changes uh, to those, that is vetted through the homeowners association. Uh, so when someone comes in to build something and there's a covenant, we may be aware that there's a covenant. We can't hold up a land use permit because of the covenant because the homeowners association would be enforcing that. Um, if we're aware of them, we certainly bounce the property owner back and say, hey, I think you have a covenant regarding this. You need to be vetting this through your homeowners association. So, covenants are essentially uh, a, a neighborhood set of laws that we're not charged with enforcing.
Okay, so I think like Amy said earlier, that's a learning curve for us and probably the commissioners that in the future when we're doing some plats, if there's some green space or something like that, instead of uh, just going along with the covenants, we should probably put a condition on that that stays that way. So that would be our job to do that, push that towards the commissioners, and then the commissioners would uh, hopefully agree to that. Um, granted, not, no excuses, this was done before any of our times, but uh, just so we know that. Anybody else have any more questions or dialogue back and forth?
Could I just say one more thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to uh, I guess get it out there for everyone here that I am just the land surveyor on this project. To be, to be honest, I wasn't expecting um, you know, backlash like this, I'll say. And I don't, I, as far as I know, I don't think Travis was either, you know, you know, no one uh, prepared me for this, I'll say. Uh, so I don't think I'm geared to answer all of the questions or, you know, whatever, but uh, I would just like to say one thing and I think it would be a question for Amy. Uh, but as far as like a commercial um, uh, storage or anything like that, that probably isn't a thing that can be approved in this area.
Yes.
I just wanna put that out there.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Amy.
The zoning district still uh, still applies, so this is zoned residential. And so uses like commercial uses aren't allowed in the residential zoning district, and we do have jurisdiction over that. So, yes, so anything, anything that would be allowed within the residential zoning, zoning district in any other residential zoning district, unless there is a covenant that further restricts that, um, then, you know, we're gonna apply our ordinance, but then a covenant can certainly come in on top of that and be more restrictive.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You guys got any comments or before we vote? I guess my, my thing or my thoughts on this, I'll just talk with you guys about is, um, finally, it's, it's the end results in the commissioner's hands, but my thought is here, um, a couple different things. One is, like we said, we had a lot that was supposed to be, you know, the way this was developed back then, even though it was just a covenant. And we weren't able to put a condition on or we learned the lesson there. Um, I believe that uh, that misstep or whatever that is, we set a learning curve, right? We can still fix it by leaving it the way it is. Um, I think it is very unfair when you break this up that, that there is a bigger lot, that the rest of the people that uh, purchased properties in the beginning, um, weren't able to do that. If there was a big lot in the very beginning, everybody that owns a lot would have been able to have the same opportunity to purchase that. I understand that uh, it would be just a, a kind of a, what you would say, a wasted lot. If we leave it, it can never be um, done with anything else, but um, I just think in fairness, I don't know if I can support this. Um, also. Um, also, uh, with the township not being here, that don't sit very well with me on something like this because we're in la la land. Um, the applicant isn't here, that don't sit well with me. I think you guys heard that before, when we go to site visits and things and applicants ain't there, it ain't important enough to them, is how I feel, so them are just some things why I think that I can't support it. So I just wanted you guys to hear that.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
So I I hear exactly what you're saying and I guess what I would say, the question for the rest of the planning commission is, um, yes, we do not have the property owner here, we have just the surveyor. Bless your heart. And and the township, um, had indicated they wanted certain things but have not communicated what that is. So I guess my question to the board is regard regardless, do you think there would be more information that you would need in order to make a recommendation tonight or do you feel you have enough information regardless of those two things to make the recommendation? So I guess that's where I see things are at at this moment.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Marvin.
I'm concerned if we approve this, um, there could be some legal backlash for, uh, from the early owners by the change of covenant.
Well, you you are going to make a recommendation is what you would be doing tonight. Do you feel you have enough information right now to make a recommendation or do you feel the fact because the property owner is not here and the township is not here, that if you had other pieces of information that you could make an informed decision? I guess that's really where we're at right now. And do you feel you've vetted this enough for the county board? I I guess that's really where you're at at this moment.
I don't think I could answer it clearly right now. That's my opinion as a board member.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, this is, uh, when I first read this, I thought, oh, this is, this is kind of upsetting that somebody thinks they can do this. Um, I don't think there was any, um, mistake made back in 2002. It was plotted out with a green space with an unbuiltable lot in the corner. The only thing that's gone wrong since then is the homeowners association either hasn't been made aware of covenants, hasn't been involved in making of covenants, and now the use of that lot is in question. That's the only thing that's in question here. Um, again, if we, I highly recommend we deny this, uh, you know, wholeheartedly, every one of us, uh, we have plenty of evidence here saying that, um, it was done in a very thoughtful and, um, you know, according to, uh, ordinance standards at the time that it was developed. A lot was set aside. The use of the lot is in question because of covenants. Covenants come and go with homeowners, uh, but if there's been something wrong in the covenant, you know, in the homeowners association, that's something they have to deal with themselves. That's nothing we are going to deal with. And whether it's a a green space that is unbuiltable or whether it's a common space that is can be used by everybody, it has great value. Uh, it has great value as these, uh, homeowners pointed out as a buffer to all the other activities that happen in this area. Um, you noticed on the, um, on the zoning map, this is a standalone rezoned for residential. There's no other residential around it, uh, spot zoned, uh, and that's what happens in spot zones is you're surrounded by other uses. Um, and, uh, so I highly recommend that we deny this, all wholeheartedly deny this, saying that, uh, 2002, the planning commission got it just right. Uh, and, um, that should be how this, um, subdivision remains. If you look at any of the objectives and and goals in residential and in the county standards and in the surrounding areas that are zoned, uh, ag or, um, or shoreland, you'll see that what they, uh, required in 2002 is consistent with their goals also.
Mr. Chair, uh, I want to make, uh, when Amy asked a question about answering this here, what I meant to say, as Dave reiterated here, we, I don't have enough information here to approve this at all. Uh, that's the what, there's not enough information to approve of it.
Okay.
And so I I agree with Dave. Uh, I recommend the rest of the boards.
We're gonna, we're gonna call the vote here, so.
Okay.
So by voting yes, you'd be voting to approve and by voting no, you would be recommending nonapproval, denial. So by voting yes, you'd be recommending approval and by voting no, you'd be recommending denial. Okay, we'll start with you, Dave.
No.
Marvin.
No.
John.
No.
Myself, Clint is no. Brent.
No.
Okay, so we have, uh, five noes, so is there someone make a motion to recommend denial?
Mr., go ahead, Brent.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I would, I would recommend that we would, um, recommend to the county board of commissioners at their July 11th, um, not, not to approve this, uh, to be an outlot, to become a buildable lot.
I second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to recommend denial to this application. Um, all in favor, say aye. Dave?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself, Clint is aye. Brent?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to recommend that the commissioners to deny this. Um, it's it's up to them yet. Just so you know, no disrespect towards you, you're in a tough spot tonight and you did a great job, so we appreciate that. So if you have, uh, any questions between now and then or Travis, contact Amy or her staff and I'll see you.
And then this will go before the board the morning of July 11th.
Okay. Thank you guys all for your time. Uh, everyone else, hope you guys have no hard feelings against me.
We're a lot beyond road people. Questions from the audience, is that program? This will go to the board even though you.
Yes.
So it would behoove us to attend that meeting?
The planning, the planning commission is a recommending body, so their recommendation to the county board is to deny. The county board will not hold another public hearing. They won't be taking any other testimony, but it is a public meeting and you are more than welcome to attend, and that's a morning meeting. Those generally start at nine, I'm not on the agenda right at nine.
Will it be passed based on their recommendation or will we vote it up for a vote?
They will vote, that they must vote. Yes. And they're, the the county board is behind you, they're hearing everything that just was spoken, so.
And and they love phone calls.
Okay. So, uh, we've got to approve the minutes from May 30th. Anybody have a motion to approve minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the May 30th minutes. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. Any new business anybody know of? I don't know of any, any old business.
I don't have any.
I don't know, Amy, you don't have nothing.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll take, uh, motion adjourned then.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, adjourned, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.